Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, January 9th, 2023, 7:00 PM here at the City Council Chambers in City Hall for the regular meeting of the City Council. Officially call the meeting to order and entertain a roll call from Carla, please.
Bofor.
Here.
For.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
I'm over here.
Myers.
Here.
Rothie.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And Kansas is absent.
Thank you, everyone. Entertain the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Before we move to Section D, the approval of the agenda.
I will move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Section U is the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion there.
I'll move to approve the December 19th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Drinkow. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Section F is our guest counsel person for the month of January, Mr. Daniel Sprague, at the invitation of Mr. Bergen. Oh, Myers, I was... Ms. Myers, or Mrs. Myers, let you formally introduce.
At the courtesy of Mr. Bergen, who suggested Daniel Sprague to me, we're happy to have you with us tonight, and I'd love to have Daniel introduce himself.
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Daniel Sprague. I've lived in Waverly here for the last five or six years. I played basketball at Orpurg, originally from Tripola, and now I work for a company called Walsh Long &amp; Company. I'm a territory sales manager in charge of all of Iowa and Nebraska, and I sell everything it takes to build a gas station, car dealership, everywhere from the tanks, the pipe, EV chargers, lights, you name it. Glad to be here.
Excellent. Thank you. Sure you know the rules of engagement. Carla's there at your left-hand side to give you any assistance you might need, so welcome aboard. Section G is a public hearing. Have one, item one is, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing. For review of the plans, specifications, form of contract, and total estimated cost for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension project. Carla, have we received any written or oral comments?
We have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comments from anybody that has joined us this evening? All right. We will go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 23-01, approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and total estimated costs in the amount of $305,252 for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension project.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion. If any.
This has been hanging out there for a long time, so I think the cost kind of got a little bit larger than where we had started from, but it would be good to get this project checked off the list.
Now, were there federal funds involved in this, or did they go away? Did we miss our window? What's the stores?
I'm sorry, I was slightly distracted. We're...
Were there federal funds involved?
For the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension.
Correct.
There are tax funds. We have $184,000 available for eligible funding. Looks like our eligible project costs are maybe a little bit below that because we have good bids.
So, the price tag of $305,000, we're going to be paying more like about 20% of that?
So, the way regionally we allocate funds is only for construction. So, we have, if you look down at the source of funds, we have, in order to maximize our eligible, our eligible costs are about $214,000. So, you take 80% of that, and that puts us at $171,000.
Okay.
So, again, we had, we had good bids, which means that everything came in lower because our local match then is, for construction, is about $70,000, which is the 20% match plus the portion that's not eligible, which is that gravel section.
So, of that $305,000 that we're putting out, we're going to be reimbursed for like $170,000, $171,000 of that?
$171,000, correct. And so, we are showing that from account, capital improvement account, $305,000, that there'll be about $30,700 transferred in. And then, there were bond proceeds specifically for this project that amounted to just over $115,000. So, the local match, we have about $12,000 more than it looks like we would need if everything comes in exactly the same. You look like you got another question.
Nope, nope. Thank you, is what I was thinking. I should say thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call Carla.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero with one absent. Resolution 23-01 is approved. Brings us to item one A. Resolution 23-02, a resolution awarding the contract for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension project and authorizing the mayor to digitally sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-02, awarding the contract for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension project to Lodge Construction Incorporated, Clarksville, Iowa, for a total bid amount of $241,674.74, and authorizing the mayor to digitally sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion.
Whoever signed it, you may be for.
All right. Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero, one absent. Resolution 23-02 is approved. Section H is public comments for items not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Are there any public comments this evening from anyone that's joined us? Seeing nobody arise, we will move forward with Section I, the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requested a specific item be considered separately. Item one is a pay request from WHKS &amp; Company for WPC facility improvements for $16,099.90. Item two is a pay request from McClure for Waverly Municipal Airport, reconstruct South Tea Hangar taxi lane for $5,906. Item three is a pay request from McClure for Waverly Municipal Airport, construct taxi way connector for $2,063.50. Item four is a pay request from Modern Design Incorporated for Cedar River Park Baseball Softball for $1,000. Item five is a pay request from Stagie Construction for park maintenance, building remodel for Item six is a pay, final pay request from WHKS &amp; Company for Rolling Prairie Trail 2021 project for $3,470.92. Item seven is a pay request to Matt Construction Incorporated for Cedar River Baseball Softball Phase III for $30,400. Item eight is a Class C retail alcohol license for Waverly Area Veterans Post. Item nine is an ownership update for Hy-Vee Incorporated. Item 10 is a Class E retail alcohol license for Casey's General Store, number 3763. And item 11 is a Class C retail alcohol license for Joe's Nighthawk. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion, if any. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries on the consent calendar. Brings us to Section J, regular business. Resolution 23-03 designating the Bremer County Independent Waverly Democrat or another local newspaper that have as the official legal newspaper of the city for the year 2023. Entertain a motion.
I move approval of Resolution 23-03, designating the Bremer County Independent Waverly Democrat as the official legal newspaper of the city for the year 2023.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen. Apologize for reading what we had here. It was a tongue twister there, a couple extra words. Any discussion on this? Hearing nothing further, roll call Carla.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 23-03 is approved. Item two is Resolution 23-04, approving a lease agreement between the City of Waverly and William Low for property adjacent to the airport. Entertain a motion.
I'll move resolution, approval of Resolution 23-04, approving the lease agreement between the City of Waverly and William Low for the safety zone acquisition of parcels of land that are adjacent to his property for the amount of $239 per acre.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bofor. Counsel discussion. Now, this is a continuation of the other ones that we approved back in December, so...
I don't really have an issue with the proposed rent. My only question is, what, what account does the money go in from these rents? Does that go into an airport fund? Okay.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call Carla.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent. Resolution 23-04 is approved. Item three is Resolution 23-05, approving a letter of support of the Bremer County zoning ordinance addressing potential construction of hazardous liquid pipelines through Bremer County. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-05, approving a letter of support of the Bremer County zoning ordinance addressing potential construction of hazard liquid pipeline through Bremer County.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rothie. Counsel discussion.
Do we actually have a copy of the letter of support?
Yes, it's in the next...
Because I found the letter of objection to the Iowa Utilities Board at the end, but I didn't actually see the letter of support.
I think that is probably on me because I submitted the documents of support for this issue, and I called it a letter.
Okay.
But then, in looking at some of the other documents of support that had been submitted to the county supervisors, they were in the form of a resolution.
Okay. Okay. So, just, because I was, I saw the, the letter of objection, but I never saw, actually saw what I would call a letter of support, so I would just want to clarify that, so...
My apologies for that. I would make one comment that occurred to me also in just recent days. There's nothing in that resolution that specifies if we pass this, that our support is for the zoning ordinance in its current format, but it hasn't formally been approved by the supervisors yet, so conceivably, changes could be made to it before they do their final approval. Is there a way we can add some wording there to cover that?
I think, excuse me, I think you can approve it just as you stated in its current form. So, if there are changes made, you will have the opportunity to approve it again because it's a different letter, different resolution of support. It's been changed. So, you're really approving the current letter of support, sorry, resolution of support as it is today, not a blanket, whatever you decide going forward, we approve it.
So...
Because I don't think that would be wise to do without knowing that the changes may be going forward.
So, we should say the current iteration of the zoning...
As of today's date.
As presented, as of today. Exactly. You could date it, and that'll take care of it.
So, we probably ought to change the first line instead of calling it a letter, to say it's a resolution in support of.
Yep.
Okay. So, do we need a friendly amendment to do that, or how do we do that? Procedure-wise? I suppose technically you do, but...
Well, but when you do this, you know, you're, the whole point of the amendment there, or the agenda in general, is to list off the topics as you're discussing them. We don't have to write any of these for you, in a sense. We don't need to put any of this out there. You can change a resolution as you see fit. So, I don't think you do need a, an amendment. You're not changing what you're discussing. You're changing the verbiage in which you would like to approve or not approve by whoever makes that actual resolution moved. So, just because it's written this way doesn't mean it has to be approved that way. You can change it any way you'd like to be the formal resolution as approved. Our agenda just typically lists the topics that you're going to discuss tonight.
The only reason I said that it probably should be is because it was already moved according to the wording.
Correct.
So...
But only if it needs to be a full-blown amendment, or the person that moved it can just make that change, second it, and go forward.
Okay.
That's the way you should do it.
I think it's simpler.
Yeah, new matter.
Motion. Correct the, or change the line.
So, we want to amend this?
You just take out the, a resolution in support of for the first line.
Feel free to take direction from Councilwoman Myers or anybody else. I mean, that's...
I was really clear on this before we started talking about it. So, could I make a motion?
Or from the amendment?
To amend.
To amend the Resolution 23-05 to say a resolution in support on that first line. Take out approving a letter.
And then the very last one also.
And the very last line, too. Yes, and the very last line. And then, my last, I know you answered this, but I'm sorry, I need a little more clarification. Does this cover, and not that I think this is going to happen, but because the supervisors haven't actually approved the zoning ordinance yet, if they were to make changes to the zoning ordinance between now and when they approve it, would it come back to us?
So, I think you can, I think you could say the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance.
The currently proposed.
Well, I mean, what they have proposed right now is like what's currently proposed. If they change it, then it's something different. But, I mean, what, we're basically approving their proposal. What they have proposed is what we're approving or supporting.
Okay. Can I make another motion?
Well, nobody's seconded that, nobody's seconded that one, so feel free to...
So, the first line, I make a motion that it reads, "A resolution in support of the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance," and so on. And then, the very last line also to say to approve a resolution in support of the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance. Do you need a second? I'll second that. Please. So, I don't have to say it. Sorry.
So, we have the motion, we have the second. I would ask the clerk to recite the current amended motion that we will vote on, the amended in...
So, it would be a resolution approving a resolution in support of the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance. That is in the first paragraph of the resolution, number 23-05. And then, at the bottom, in the, now therefore, it will say, "To approve a resolution in support of the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance."
I think the second one was right, but the first one you added...
Yeah.
What did I add?
It should be a resolution approving the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance.
Right.
Or a resolution.
Part of resolution.
You're not actually approving it. You don't have an authority.
Right. Yeah. So, is it good the way she has it right now?
Read back.
The top.
The first one.
It's a, a resolution in support of the proposed Bremer County zoning ordinance.
Okay.
The proposed Bremer County, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So, on that proposed amended resolution, all in favor of the amended resolution, say aye.
About the amendment or the resolution?
The amendment.
The amended verbiage.
The amended verbiage.
Right, correct. It's a voice vote at this time to go back into conversation. So, on the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carries. Counsel discussion on the amended motion for this resolution, if any.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. I know there are significant concerns about construction of this pipeline, and I don't want in any way to minimize those concerns that people have, but I'm a little uncomfortable voting for either of these resolutions at this point, and I'll, I'll tell you why. And it probably isn't all that important because this is really more symbolic than, than effective, frankly. But the two reasons are, number one, I just don't understand, and I haven't been acquainted enough with the issues to feel comfortable in, you know, recommending that a zoning change be made for one way or another, for whatever particular reason there is. I just, I don't have the background to feel comfortable to have an opinion on whether this is a good thing or not a good thing. And if I don't feel comfortable with it, I'm going to vote against it, even if maybe at some point I'll say that was not the correct vote. But without fully understanding what it is that I'm voting for here, I feel I really am impelled to vote. No. The other issue that I have is I'm just wondering if this is something that is really appropriate for the city to be addressing. I know that there are some tangential impacts that this may have on the city. I know in the resolution, there's a paragraph that talks about the interest in the city in economic development, and potential future housing, productivity of agricultural land, et cetera. Well, I understand that, but that's true of a lot of different issues that we have that come up. You know, this, this is not something that, the pipeline doesn't run through city property. It doesn't come into the corporate limits of the city. They're not asking for the city to rezone anything. We're not looking at setting up any kind of particular platting for, for this. They're not looking for economic input into it. It really doesn't have anything that impacts the city, other than the fact that this construction project will be happening several miles north of the city, and there are a number of people who feel that it is not appropriate because of the issues that have been outlined. I can see where there are some projects that may have an impact on the city. For example, if there were a, a new road that was going to be built, that would be carrying a lot of traffic, even though it may not go through the city of Waverly, it would certainly be something that we would have great interest in, in trying to have input into the location of that road. I just feel that the connection here between the city's interest in this pipeline are just too tenuous for it to be something that the real, the city should address in a formal resolution. So, I'm going to vote no on these resolutions.
I have to say that before I read the information, and I appreciate Julie putting together the packet, and before I read emails that we've gotten from people both inside and outside the city limits, or just casual conversations about it, I think I felt like you did, Rod. I wasn't sure how this directly impacted us since it doesn't go within city limits. However, then I started reading the documents and, and looking online at some of the incidents that have happened with other CO2 pipelines. There was an incident in Mississippi a couple of years ago that was quite tragic and, and where there was a rupture or a leak in a pipeline like this. It was a different purpose for the pipeline than what this pipeline's going to be for, but that made me really think about the potential impact on our city, not just that, that citizens might directly be sickened or injured, but that our first responders, our fire department, our ambulance crew, et cetera, are going to be responding if something happens to this pipeline. And one of the most tragic parts about the incident in Mississippi is the local first responders had no idea how to respond. The company didn't share any of the safety information. They weren't trained properly throughout the departments that responded there, and that really hindered the emergency response. And so, when I looked at, at the documents that KIP from the Bremer County submitted, and, and, you know, basically, I think what the main purpose, not the only purpose, but one of the main purposes of their, the county's resolution is to try to ensure safety with setbacks from, from residential houses, from occupied buildings, even from livestock, and compelling or requesting the company to share information about safety protocols and, you know, shut off for these. I think the shut off access is every 20 miles, which is a long way to go if you have to go and oxygen is cut off and your vehicle won't work and you can't breathe. So, I think there's a, there, even though it doesn't directly run through our city, I think if something happens, it's going to impact, and we need to be involved in emergency preparedness. The other thing I will say is that I think that, we talk a lot about how can we work with the county and how can we do things, and we've talked at economic development meetings about how what's good for Waverly is good for Bremer County and vice versa. And so, I think it's really important for us to think about the impact this potentially will have on the smaller towns, especially Reedland. This goes right north of Highway 3, right along Highway 3, and potentially could impact their economic and housing development. And so, I think it's important for us to think about ourselves, not as an island with regard to an issue like this, but as part of the county. And I haven't heard from anyone in favor of this, actually. And, but we've heard mainly from people who are worried about, about safety, about the environmental impact potentially of this project, as well as issues of eminent domain, too, which are complicated. It's a very complicated issue, but, but I, I think it's important for us to talk about and to think about it as, as a bigger picture and not just us insulated within the city limits.
I'm going to have to agree with everything that Ms. Rothie said as well, especially with, you know, the emergency responders, having family that are emergency responders, and seeing the impact that it has just on the community. And like you said, it's, Bremer County is part of us, is part, we are part of Bremer County, so it does affect us. And I think we do need to definitely educate ourselves as a community and individually on this to see how it could impact us and our neighbors and so on, so...
I think, you know, the supervisors definitely have a difficult task here. You've got to figure out, well, first of all, there's, there's really not any good wealth of information as far as studies go that say how far this should be away from buildings or, or city limits. You know, we have some incidences that kind of give us some idea, but you've got, you know, wind and, and elevation, and that all comes into play. I, I do appreciate the direction that they, that they took this, you know, a mile away from the city is, especially a growing city is way too close, in my opinion, from everything that, that I can, that I can look at. You know, I, that would really slow the, you know, we're really wanting to grow the north side of the city. I wouldn't be too anxious about building a home that's a half a mile from a pipeline like this. I think it would just really stifle development on the north end. So, I do think it is appropriate for us to, to back what the supervisors have done here.
I think it, it's so complicated. I mean, the federal regulations, state, local jurisdictions don't have, they don't have too many options for how to manage this. And so, I think their focus has really been on the setbacks and the safety. And you bring up a good point, Matt, that they, we really don't have regulations yet for this type of pipeline. And so, you know, that makes me a little wary, too, but, yeah. And certainly, the, the companies, you know, who are going to put in the pipeline, they can go to the Board of Adjustment for the county and ask that it be varied, right, if they object. if they object. But I think counties, you know, I think a different pipeline company is threatening or is going to sue a couple of counties who've said you can't put the pipeline through. And so it's quite contentious and very complicated. And so I think the tack they're taking, you know, like they said, they're trying to balance safety of all versus rights of individuals, plus not overstep legally what their authority is. And it's very tricky. And so I think the tack that they're taking is smart, trying to protect what they are obligated to protect under their job description, so to speak. And, you know, I'm not sure if it's even legally binding to the companies, but it's certainly a request and publicly stated, but it's a very complicated issue.
I just want to give a piece of respect to Mr. Dove from the Breamer County Planning and Zoning Commission. He was present this evening. Ms. Myers had emailed me earlier today, just articulating that if somebody had shown up, that we could engage with them if we needed some clarification on how they've gotten to where they're at. So just for the record, he is here.
I was just going to ask, I guess I have one comment quick. What struck me so much when I started learning about this was, I didn't understand that CO2 in this form is so much different from other things that are carried through pipelines we're familiar with. Because if there is a pipeline fracture, that CO2 immediately, while liquefied in the pipeline, it immediately becomes a gas. And it's a gas that's heavier than oxygen, so it displaces oxygen in the atmosphere wherever it goes, which not only is a danger to all living things, but incapacitates any vehicle or rescue equipment that utilizes oxygen. But the other thing that, I guess, made this whole thing make sense to me is when I learned that the companies that are proposing these pipelines right now are doing so under somewhat of a timetable duress, because they are, Mr. Dove, I'm going to ask if you'll come up and speak to us in a minute, so you correct me if I'm wrong, but they are now, this project could qualify for some pretty significant tax incentives under the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed last summer. But there's a timeline on that. The construction has to start by 2025, I believe. Is that correct?
I think the construction will start.
You want to come on up, Mr. Dove?
Yeah. And the last part of my sentence there is, that has to happen pretty fast in order for them to get those tax incentives. But the federal government that's in charge of creating safety regulations hasn't had time to do so.
I want to, before you make any comments, Mr. Dove, I just want to articulate that your comments are as just a member, not as the entire body of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the county, just so that nothing is taken out of context for the record, so.
Yeah, that's correct. The safety regulations are, for hazardous liquid pipelines are controlled by FIMSA. Pipeline hazardous materials, something is their acronym, is FIMSA. There aren't a lot of miles of CO2 pipeline in the country, and FIMSA has openly said they don't have a good handle on safety regulations for those pipelines, and they're working on them ASAP. I've been told by the lawyer that the supervisors hired to help us with this ordinance, FIMSA rushing through, you know, safety regulations is a multi-year project. So nothing's going to happen extremely fast as far as specific rules for hazardous liquid pipelines, CO2 pipelines. The timeline, I think that both Summit and Navigator, two of the three companies that are proposing CO2 pipelines in the state of Iowa are probably trying to break ground in '23. So the original Q credits, I think they had to be pumping CO2 by 2026 to qualify for these. I was just told today, and this is not, this is just from a friend, that they thought they backed that time up, which I, it seems logical that our government would do that. So they'll probably, if they haven't already, the 2026 timeline could be backed up. But there seems to be some urgency, both Summit and Navigator, to get these to start moving dirt. So. I would like to say, you've got a good handle on it, and there's a huge vacuum in information, and specifically safety information. From the planning and zoning perspective, we tried to come up with an ordinance that focuses on the things which we have some authority on, economic growth, the direction of economic growth, both physically and fiscally. And, of course, the safety of and well-being of the citizens of Breamer County, protection of sensitive areas. So the ordinance is, the attempt is to protect all those things and the rights of Breamer County. We follow our comprehensive land use plan to come up with this ordinance. And believe me, we had a good legal help from Timothy Whipple from a law firm in Des Moines, the supervisors hired after the very first meeting where we flopped around trying to figure out how to do this. So appreciate his help very much. When Story County and Shelby County passed their ordinances, and both of those counties, they're just, they're farther ahead than Breamer County is. When they passed those ordinances, they were sued the following day in federal court by the pipeline companies. Is that going to be the same path we're on? Very likely. The preemption is, a preemption of authority is the big issue, and that's above my pay grade, and it will be settled by people that deal with that stuff day in, day out. So the pipeline companies would say that the ordinances that the counties are putting up, and there are many counties that are creating their ordinances now, I think somewhere around 30 of them. We're maybe just a little bit ahead of the pack, but behind some of the others. So I think the, these previous lawsuits that I mentioned are going to be very important to help the counties determine if they have any authority in citing and robbing. And that's really what we're hoping, that we have something to say. We're not trying to create a brick wall through the county. This, they'd be able, anyone or the pipeline companies can apply for variance. So that's going to be the mode of action, and then permits, and that would be the process that they would go through. So there, we have a two-mile recommended setback in this ordinance from city limits, and they are inside that two miles off the northeast corner of Waverly. And I'd also just mention, if there's any expected growth towards the north side of town, you know, you'll encroach on that two miles real soon. And I know that you're building a school on the north side of town right now, so. Other than that, we've, like I say, we've tried to focus more on economic growth development, the direction of expansion, logical expansion for cities, and that's where we came up with the two miles. So I don't have anything else to say. If you have specific questions, I can answer them. I'm not an expert, but I'm on planning and zoning, and we've been working on this since July, so.
I do appreciate all your guys' hard work on this, and that definitely was, it's definitely a lot to think about and to put together, so I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was very clearly laid out. I thought that was really helpful, that you went point by point about why you did what you did. Do you know when it's coming before the Utilities Board for a vote?
I do not. I do not.
I couldn't find out anyplace online, but.
I know that there should have been oral arguments in December unless that got pushed back. I'm not sure. I haven't specifically asked our lawyer how that went.
It looked like they're doing each company separately. Most of the stuff I found was about Summit.
Right. Summit is ahead. Navigator's a company that's going through Breamer County, and Summit is just farther along in the process. So you've been hearing more about Summit in the Des Moines Register and other media sources for that reason.
Had you received input from citizens who were not hesitant about the pipeline?
No, we have not. I have not heard of anyone that's in favor of it. A supervisor said that there was a split amongst rural Breamer County, and I, it stands to reason somewhere there should be some people that think it's a good thing. None of them have come forward. We've not received any letters from citizens or municipalities or organizations saying that, no, we want to do this. We want to have a pipeline to sequester carbon. No one has told us that.
Was there any data that you guys were able to get to come up with that two-mile?
No.
It seems that with something like this, the Iowa Utilities Board or somewhere should be able to model this out exactly where exactly these setbacks should be.
Right.
I mean, I'm comfortable somewhat with two miles. I'd be more comfortable if it wasn't through there, but, yeah.
So for us to, when most people talk about setbacks, they think that it's 100% a safety issue, so far from an occupied structure, so far from a school, so far from a hospital. And quite frankly, that's probably what, you know, to some degree, we should all think that. I don't, we tried to, when we came up with setbacks, we tried to come up with sound logic, you know, and maybe a little bit of scientific logic or something as to how far away we should be. And believe me, there just isn't a lot of data out there about CO2 problems, you know, in Mississippi. Really, they didn't have good results. So right now, the entire EMS system in Breamer County is just befuddled over how they're going to go at this. It's, it seems to be a real issue for them. I'm sure it takes up meeting time, all their local meetings. We relied on Kip Ledege, who's the Breamer County Emergency Management, whatever the title that is, and that, we used his emergency, is somebody in here, an emergency?
Emergency management.
What?
Emergency management.
ERG, does that make sense?
Yeah, Response Guide Book.
There you go.
Yeah.
We use the Emergency Response Guide Book to come up with some of these, some of the logic, using the worst-case scenario for a carbon dioxide leak. That's where the, and that came out of that ERG.
Yeah, those are great tactics, because I know, having been out in sensitive areas where you've got natural habitat that you're trying to protect and stuff like that, they limit transportation hazardous materials down the highway, because if you have an incident, it goes right into a waterway, that kind of thing. So it's kind of the same thing, so.
Well, I'd like to mention that most of our rural emergency response is volunteer, and our emergency response is really lacking on personnel volunteering. So our emergency response ability for Breamer County, even Waverly, is probably going to be impaired, especially for a disaster, if something would happen. So that's definitely something to think about.
Yeah, if the pipeline breaks anywhere in this radius, I'm sure the Waverly Emergency Response is going to be involved. They're going to have to be.
Absolutely.
We're talking about plume modeling every mile based on wind directions, and I suppose temperatures and wind directions, and every mile across the county, so that emergency response would have a plan for every situation. It just seems like a lot of work that's going to have to be done.
You can have a plan, but if you don't have somebody to do it, carry it out.
Right.
And that's the problem that we lack as well.
Yeah, yeah. And then to have our voluntary responders be trained for it, and then the right type of equipment. Seems pretty massive.
And I know the resolution talked about the training required for first responders. I was looking to see if it asked that the pipeline company pitch in to pay for that.
Yeah, they will pay. They said initially at their meeting that they had over here at the center back in, it might have been August, that, you know, they were going to be responsible for a lot of that expense. KIP has yet to get anything nailed down as to what they mean by that. He initially told me about the plume modeling, and I've asked him about that, and he's nowhere on that. So at this point, their pipeline companies aren't giving a lot of that information, and you talked about Summit withholding that information. So, yeah, there's, I don't know how that'll all shake out.
Kind of to that point, there were a few things that I didn't catch the first couple times I read through the ordinance. But there is an item under fees and assessments that asks, this would be if the ordinance is passed, I think, the pipeline company would be required to pay an annual assessment fee in the amount of $116.92 per mile of the pipeline. And that is to do each year, sorry, I'm trying to cut out the extraneous words, towards emergency planning, is that correct?
Not very much, though, is it?
No. And then there are also some points about requiring them to present, or provide some computer models, I think what you were talking about.
Right, right.
But it might necessarily be in place for Breamer County?
That would be accurate. If the ordinance does pass, enforcing it is still another obstacle. But we do have the, pipeline companies have said that they're going to help with the EMS. We just don't know what that means right now.
Well, let me say, I want to make sure that I'm not misunderstood here. I'm not necessarily in favor or against the pipeline, either way. My concerns were that the city was getting involved in something that maybe they really had no business getting involved in. But as I was listening to the discussion here, and I hear all of the steps that the county is taking in dealing with some of the issues that are coming up with the pipeline, I think that you're taking very reasonable and forward-looking steps, something that I personally could very easily support. And even though I'm not sure where the approval of the city would have, carry all that much weight, you know, there may be some advantage for saying that, you know, the largest municipality in the county is also concerned about some of these issues and would like to see them addressed. I still have some reservations over it, but I think I'm going to vote yes instead of no.
Okay. Our intentions, as part of the ordinance, Planning and Zoning Committee, or Commission, which I'm a member of, our intentions were just to get as broad approval from the county, from county organizations, from municipalities. That's what we were trying to do. So we have a packet of information that the supervisors will have, and if we are ending up in court, we want to have that kind of document, we want to have that broad approval of this ordinance for a legal setting. So we've approached every municipality, a number of organizations, you know, Whartburg, the hospital, we've got a number of letters now, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dove.
Okay.
I know we've got a secondary round of some of the similar discussion to come forward. Any closing comments on the amended Resolution 2305?
Just that I'm sort of surprised people aren't here to talk about this. I mean, we got quite a bit of, you know, people coming up to us, or a few emails about it, and so I'm sort of surprised no one's here to state their concerns, but I appreciate Mr. Dove coming.
I suspect the public knows that we're all going to vote against this, but I could be wrong.
There's 10 people watching on YouTube, so.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate what Heather said, that I really appreciate all the work that the County P&amp;Z Commission has put into this. I think it's been a Herculean effort on their part, and they had to do it in short order. And thank you for that, and also for being here to help educate us.
Thank you. With that, on the amended Resolution 2305, roll call Carla, please.
Myers.
Yes. Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, the amended Resolution 23-05 is approved. Brings us to item number four, Resolution 23-06, approving a letter of objection to the Iowa Utilities Board, voicing objection to Navigator's request for approval from that body, which, if approved, would allow construction as proposed. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 23-06, approving a letter of objection to the Iowa Utilities Board, voicing objection to Navigator's request for approval for that body, which, if approved, would allow construction as proposed.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, was it?
Me.
Second by Bofer, sorry. Council discussion. I can kind of preface that this is a little bit different than the last one, or quite a bit different. This would be a letter of objection directly to the Iowa Utility Board in similarity to what individuals can submit to the Iowa Utility Board for the permit from the Utility Board for the pipeline to proceed with their project.
So I believe we have every city in Breamer County with a letter of objection to the Board of Supervi, or to the Iowa Utilities Board, if I'm not mistaken. This was my, originally I approached the mayor a couple months ago to just do this, and I am glad that we kind of waited, let the supervisors do their work and kind of duel up on this. But I think this is an important piece as well.
And so the letter we're looking at is the final two pages of this packet, right? Pages 43 and 44? Okay, that we would send.
So if that's of my knowledge, and James or Bill can change this, if you want to submit when they're all submitted electronically, so this would be put into their portal system as a submission.
Yeah, I was just making sure it was the letter and not the resolution at the start.
Yeah.
Actually, what I do is to send both together, because the resolution is the approval of the letter.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, council discussion, if any further? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Roffey.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 23-06 is approved. Brings us to item number five, Resolution 23-07, authorizing the removal of the tail race from the 117 Northeast Building to the Cedar River Bridge on Highway 3. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 23-07, authorizing the removal of the tail race from the 117 Northeast. Isn't supposed to be first? Or is this first? Sorry.
You can make that.
We know what you mean.
117 Northeast Building to the Cedar River Bridge on Highway 3 for the total estimated cost of $250,000 to $300,000.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen. Council discussion, I'll articulate, we'll just add in the street going forward, so I won't sign that one tonight.
The, when I first-
If it's approved, sorry.
Read this resolution, I threw up a little bit in my mouth. That's a lot of money.
Too much information, I think.
Took a look, took a look at the tail race this afternoon, and I was thinking that if there was an issue, it is that this is probably the least expensive time for us to do it because of the work already on the bridge. And when I took a look at the mill, it's in worse shape than I thought it was. I mean, there are big chunks of concrete flaking off, and the, so the sediment's already started to fill up that area, and it will not take long at all before that is just a tangle of trees and garbage and all kinds of bad stuff. So it really needs to be taken care of because if we don't, I think we're going to have a big mess. So I'm hoping that when we take a look at it, that the actual cost is going to be somewhat less than what it's estimated to be. But I would really like to see us go forward with that project.
Sir, I think we'll be under the bids that were given. They were very conservative just to make sure we had the funding to acquire it. And so if this is approved, they would basically go to the building where the hydroelectric components were, which is attached to this. They would slice it right there and incense carve it. And since you are correct, somebody will be already be removing part of this at the bridge. It is not that expensive to just go north of the river and take out the rest of it. The timing is what we're going to try to accomplish, working with WHGS to get the permits, which take longer than anything else, to get this accomplished so we can just get this removed, clean up the river all throughout that area, the sandbars, the trees, just get that cleaned. And so regardless of what we do with the building, it stays, it goes, I think it's important to get this out of there because it is in terrible shape, and to try and patch it would be ridiculous. What comes of this also is not just a removal of that, that also is the placement of what they're calling an erosion mat, which then helps to benefit the shoreline that is left, both the building foundations and then the shore also. So that would also be put in as well for this cost. It's not just removing that piece, it's also replacing the erosion mat, is what I think the DOT will be using for their portion also. It'll just continue up north and then actually help that shoreline, too.
And that answers one of the two questions I had. One was to make sure that we weren't creating more problems by removing that because water can do some strange things and unexpected things. And I think I mentioned in one of the last meetings when this was brought up, that I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to end up undermining the wall that the rest of the downtown is built on. So I'm glad to hear that that's being taken care of. The other question I have, too, is that we're talking in all of the material here about removing the tail race from the dam to the bridge, but there's also a section that's south of the bridge. Is that being removed also?
Well, there's a sandbar that goes that far, but the actual tail race at least stops at the bridge. In fact, when they take the bridge out-
It goes south of it, you're right.
It goes south of it, yeah.
It's going to take the entire thing.
Okay.
So that was our discussion. It's not far past that bridge. So we just looked at the northern portion, which is the more visible piece. You don't really see the other as much.
Yeah, it's not much. It's maybe, what, maybe about 100 feet?
Yeah.
Something like that.
So it'll take the entire thing out. Because at the time, the pier itself was going to be cut off at the same height of the tail race and left because it's a separate contract from what the DOT was going to do.
Well, it's interesting because the tail race comes to the pier, and then the pier becomes part of the tail race, and then it starts again going to the south, so.
So they think DOT is going to take a piece of that out when the bridge went, and then it became nearly cutting it off level with the tail race and leaving it. And so always get it all out of there.
Take it all out.
And that's our goal, is to take it all out with this.
So is the estimate, James, is this from the documents we looked at in December?
No, this is from WHGS Engineering separately. They've talked to a few contractors that do this work and most likely be bidding on that bridge when it's being done. And again, it's still padded just in case, depending on what the circumstances were. But they think it'll be enough to get it done and get the erosion mat put in.
So are you just planning to, is this going to go under, well, I guess we aren't doing the bid for the bridge. That'll go under the state.
It'll be separate on us to do that with coordination from the WHGS, who's also the contractor that under the engineer, or the DOT on that bridge. You know, Mike talked about earlier, we tried to do a contract similar with the DOT to where it's a Division One, Division Two, we pay our share, and once they found out it has some historical significance, I guess, because it's old concrete, we can't do that now. So it has to be done separately by us in conjunction with, if we'd like to, but it's a timing thing to make sure that we have the ability to get the contractors performing the work. We're the most likely ones to bid the best price. You take out the rest of it when you're already there, and that's our goal, to try and get that done as well, but it most likely will come out.
Just to clarify, so that part of the pier where they were just going to cut it off, now that'll be taken out also?
You'll clear the river all the way down, and it'll look a lot better, get rid of all the trees and the debris and the sandbars. Now, it's not going to take care of the rock on the west side of the river that people stand and fish on. This is not about that. This is about the sand and debris on the east side next to the pier, next to the walls. That'll be removed.
What's that side with the next projects and the riverbank redevelopment would be part of that?
Yep.
Along the South Riverside?
So regardless of what happens to the building, we are still trying to figure that all out for you eventually to talk about further. This is one thing we wanted to do because of the timing of it, just to make sure we got it done, the least expensive opportunity.
Anything further with this conversation? Hearing none, roll call Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Roffey.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 23-07 is approved. Item six is approval of the mayoral appointments. The one is approval of the following mayoral appointment. Chief Rich Purcell is reappointed to the Breamer County E911 Service Board for a term ending January 1, 2024. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the mayoral appointments, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Myers. Council discussion, I'll make one comment. Having been to the meeting last week, last Thursday evening, it definitely earns us keep. Some significant challenges coming with all of that type of stuff, especially budgetarily. So thank you for your service on that. I know it's kind of an extension of your role here in the city, but thank you. Anything from anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Item number seven is approval of the Mayor Pro Tem. My intention is to go ahead and reappoint Councilman Tim Kangas from Ward Five to serve in that capacity. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Mayor Pro Tem of Tim Kangas.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Roffey. Council discussion, if any?
It's great, he's not here to defend himself.
Yeah. I did not remind him that this was happening tonight because I didn't want to have a message. Yeah, scare him. Sorry, Tim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Section eight is approval of council liaisons to the boards and commissions. We're going to work through that, but we'll entertain a motion pending the final listing.
What motion?
Do you make a motion that will approve the council liaison pending the final listing there, after discussion?
So I will move approval of the council liaisons as decided upon in the near future.
I'll second that.
Motion by Bergen, second by Roffey. We will have some council discussion. We did have a communication with Councilwoman Myers about, oh no, who was, Councilwoman Roffey through email, not Myers. It involves Councilwoman Myers. In particular, it was noted by Ms. Roffey, let you speak for yourself, because I won't put words in your mouth.
I just said that if anybody feels the need to step back and wants to relieve themselves of a commission, I'd be happy to take on another commission if anybody wants me to do that. Julie had mentioned something, but it conflicts with one of the meetings I already go to, so.
I noticed there are basic, there's enough commissions that on average, we should be at about three commissions. Not everyone can be at three, but we want to aim for three. Julie has four, and I think there are three people who only have two. So it would make sense that, you know, Julie finds a way to step off one of hers and someone else can step in, but.
Yes. That was my calculation.
I wouldn't argue with that, but I won't complain if I need to stay on what I'm on.
Yeah, I looked at the other comment that Ms. Roffey made in her email communication was, the two commissions that she's on with Heritage Days and then also the Senior Center are, they're boards, but they aren't-
They don't really do any city business. I mean, I enjoy being on both.
Commission like Leisure Services, Gulf, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I enjoy being on both, and I attend both regularly, but they don't really have anything to do with government. So I'd be happy to take on something. Julie had mentioned the Airport Commission, but it conflicts with the Heritage Days meeting. It's the second Thursday evening of the month, so.
By no means are we limited to just what Julie has on her plate to take from. Is, this is the easiest way to hash this out, is right in front of everybody, honestly, with open meetings, rules, and that kind of thing, rather than just drawing from a hat. We try to be accommodating to everybody's schedule and those types of things, so.
I would just comment, the reason that I, when Anna asked me about it, that I said Airport Commission, I would be okay with giving that up. I do feel particularly connected to being on the Chamber Board because I'm a small business owner. And the other two, the LEC Commission and the Golf Course Commission, work for me, whereas they probably would not work for a lot of people's work schedules. But I'm open to-
Right.
I would be willing to take over one of those, because right now I have fairly light appointments.
And you're at two right now?
I'm at two right now. So if there was something, actually Thursday evening or during the day, any of them that you felt was something, I can certainly do the Airport Commission.
That'd be fine with me if you are okay with that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay.
And, Mike, no offense to you or the Airport Commission.
None taken. I'll speak for him.
Thank you.
Because I have two children who are in the airline industry, maybe that would-
I was going to say, fitting.
Perfect.
So that being the only change at this time, the rest of the slate would stay the same. Any further discussion over those items, unless there's something else that somebody else has that Ms. Roffey might be interested in to be more engaged with city business? Right, absolutely. No, I'm just throwing that out there.
Just put it out there.
Yep. If we're fine with that, I'm fine with that. I always try to accommodate people's personal interest and their schedules, so it's accommodated. So with that, slate stays the same. Mr. Drinkow on Airport Commission, all in favor of that arrangement, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carries. Section K is the reports from boards and commissions. Item one is Board of Adjustments Minutes of November 14, '22. Item two is Historic Preservation Commission Minutes of October 24, '22. Item three is the Breamer Waverly Law Board Minutes of December 12, '22. Item four is Leisure Services Commission Minutes of November 17, '22. Item five is the Golf Commission Minutes of November 8, '22. And finally, item six is the Waverly Senior Center Calendar for January of '23, all received into the record. Moves us to Section L, Staff Updates, with Mr. Brodner.
Just an update for us this evening, sir.
Thank you.
Just one quick update. We're still continuing to pick up Christmas trees, wreaths, garlands, like that, until January 11. If it doesn't get picked up, give a call out to the office, and we can schedule to get grabbed by then.
Okay. Can I request the same response I got today on the phone this morning, Garrett, on the sledding hill, the inquiry on that?
Sure. So the sledding hill would be open if we had enough snow. We're not at that point right now where we have enough snow, so it is, it is closed right now, but once it snows again, we have enough, it will be open. So there are signs posted for when it's closed.
Perfect. Speaking of the golf course, sledding hill in particular. So, thank you, sir.
Don't be offended, sir.
Thank you. Moves us to City Council comments. We're going to keep the same pattern, just start with Ms. Myers this evening.
Nothing for me.
You, Mr. Bergen?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Schneider? Thank you. Mr. Drinkow?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Roffey? Ms. Bofer? Mr. Spregg? Nothing? All right. I do have one thing for Mayor's comments. The Meals on Wheels program here in our community is extremely short of volunteers. I've delivered, it doesn't take that long to participate. You don't need to do it every day, you don't need to do it every week, but anytime that you are able to help, Missy with the Meals on Wheels program would entertain a phone call. Her number is 319-231-1623, and 319-231-1623, if you're interested in helping out a little bit with delivering meals to those in need. So with that, we'll move to Section O, the Executive Session. Item number one is to discuss collective bargain strategy for impending city unit and Waverly Police Protective Association negotiations as provided by Section 20.17, subsection three of the Code of Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by- Motion by Schneider, second by Raffi. Roll call, please.
Bofor.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Raffi, yes. Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, we are entered into executive session.